The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News on Tuesday, January 6th, as well as posted on the city's website. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Briggs-Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Present.
Councilman Graham.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sessoms.
Present.
And Council President Hockday.
Present.
We have all members present in our quorum.
Please rise for the pleasurable allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of... Second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the meeting, minute, meetings, minutes of the meeting have been approved. Okay, we're going right into our discussion items today. We'll start with Councilwoman Cherry with the presentation to Lieutenant Alamin.
I'll give her her picture. Good evening, City of Plainfield.
Good evening.
Tonight I have the honor and privilege to recognize Lieutenant Mahassan Alamin, the daughter of retired Captain Siddiq Alamin and our former Councilwoman Fahima Alamin. With nineteen years of dedicated service to the City of Plainfield Police Department, Lieutenant Alamin exemplifies the true meaning of public service, living by the mantra, "Service is the rent you pay for a living." We're here tonight to celebrate her remarkable achievement, her graduation from the prestigious FBI Academy. Lieutenant Alamin is not only the first black officer, but also the first female officer in the history of the Plainfield Police Department to attend and graduate from the FBI Academy. By breaking these barriers, Lieutenant Alamin is paving the way for future generations. Her achievement sends a powerful message to little girls everywhere that they too can aim high and accomplish greatness. Thank you Lieutenant Alamin for making history and putting Plainfield on the map. Your legacy will inspire many for years to come. We are giving you a nice picture and also a resolution, a councilmatic resolution, from the entire council, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll read the first and last. Whereas, the Plainfield City Council recognizes your extraordinary achievements of individuals who bring distinct an honor to our community through their dedication in service and professional excellence. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be presented to Lieutenant Alamin as a token of the city's appreciation and admiration for her dedication and leadership, and it is adopted unanimously by the entire city council. At this time, I want to invite our very own Assemblywoman Lynda Carter to come up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cherry. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor. Council President and Council. How you all doing today? Happy New Year. Yes. All right, Lieutenant. I can't believe it's been nineteen years, but I remember, okay, your first day with the City of Plainfield. Oh, yeah, I remember. And it was an amazing day, you know, and I know that you've made your family proud, but you've made the City of Plainfield proud, you've also made the state of New Jersey proud. And it'd be, on behalf of the Senate General Assembly, a joint legislative resolution sponsored by Senate President Nick Scatari, Assemblyman Kennedy, and myself, we also have a resolution for you, nicely framed, you know, not, I know your picture would have been better in this, but you know, it looks good. And I think the two right next to each other would be fantastic, don't you all? Yes. But let me say this, you truly have exemplified what it is to dream, what it is for, you know what, when you put your mind to and put a plan in place, and what you can achieve. And you are truly an individual that all young girls, not just our young girls, but our young boys, our youth, and even all of us, you know what, when you, sometimes things don't go all the way that you think that they're going to go, but if you put that plan in place, you can achieve it. So thank you for all that you've done, thank you for all that you're going to be doing, and we look forward to still continuing to make your mark, not just here in Plainfield, but throughout the city and throughout the country. Thank you.
Well, I didn't expect to speak or say anything, however, thank you, thank you, council members. I truly am just humbled and grateful and appreciative, and I want to thank my director, you know, he couldn't be here today, however, he nominated me because he saw something in me to attend this prestigious academy. And I also want to thank my family for sticking by me and encouraging me, and my father for planting the seed before I came on the job. He planted the seed for me, and I said, you know what, I'm going to do it, and I'm going to make it, and I did. So thank you, everyone, and thank my community as well for sticking by me and believing in me. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor and the council, could you come down for a picture?
Yeah.
I'll invite the mayor, if you'd like to say some words.
Yeah, I just want to really recognize this outstanding lieutenant in our Plainfield PD who has done a wonderful job over the years, and to go on to get this kind of training with the FBI is something that we should all be very proud of, and we here at the city, the governing body, and the city council, we are very proud of you, so congratulations. And I believe Ronnie Taylor is present here, I would ask her to come forward, and we have two resolutions, I believe it's oh, fifty-six and fifty-seven. Mr. President, if we could wait for a few minutes until the family members...
Okay, absolutely. Sure, yes. Do we have represent...
No, she's here.
Oh, just like that? Just in time.
So, there's two, yes sir. No, I just have one, because there's no family number for the other one, I just want the rest in.
Okay, please.
Certainly. Firstly, thank Council President for his accommodation as always, and the city council members, and the mayor. I'm always allowed, I'm Ronnie Taylor, I'm Superintendent of Parks and Recreation for the City of Plainfield, and as you know, when I come up here, I always say, "History is important." And the mayor's charged me with uncovering history and making sure that we place it in Plainfield Parks. So for Black History Month, I have presented for consideration two resolutions to city council, and that's in to support of the two events that the Division of Parks and Recreation is offering for the month of February. We're going to do a viewing of the movie The Six Triple Eight, and we've identified two women who were discharged from Fort Dix to the City of Plainfield to live here for some time, and so that's one resolution. And we had four Plainfield High School graduates, go Cardinals, who served as Tuskegee Airmen. And while we've tasked local historian Ethel Washington for doing our interpretive plaques, which we placed in a yet-to-be-determined piece of land here, we'll have two interpretive plaques, one for the Six Triple Eight and the two privates that served from the City of Plainfield, and four for the four Tuskegee Airmen who were, who served from Plainfield High School. And we've been able, of course, to identify, for which I have a personal connection to one family, Mr. Henry, so I'll do the resolution for the Tuskegee Airmen first. Resolution honoring First Lieutenant S. Albert Black, Second Lieutenant Russell Carpenter, Second Lieutenant Warren Henry, and First Lieutenant Charles Miller for their service as Tuskegee Airmen. Whereas, six, nineteen seventy-six, the United States has celebrated Black History Month in each month, each February, to seize the opportunity to honor the accomplishments of African-Americans in every area of endeavor through history of the United States, and whereas the citizens of Plainfield honor Plainfield High School graduates, First Lieutenant S. Albert Black, Second Lieutenant Russell Carpenter, Second Lieutenant Warren Henry, and First Lieutenant Charles Miller, for their service as Tuskegee Airmen. And whereas, on March twenty-second, nineteen forty-one, the Tuskegee Airmen, the first African-American military aviators in the United States Armed Forces began training at Tuskegee University, and whereas the Tuskegee Airmen fought for the freedom of their nation during a time in history when they also faced segregation and other oppressive laws, and resolve, the citizens of Plainfield celebrate the deeds and sacrifices of First Lieutenant S. Albert Black, Second Lieutenant Russell Carpenter, Second Lieutenant Warren Henry, and First Lieutenant Charles Miller. Now therefore be resolved, an interpretive plaque shall be installed commemorating the service of the First Lieutenant Albert Black, Second Lieutenant Russell Carpenter, Second Lieutenant Warren Henry, and First Lieutenant Charles Miller. And before they're resolved, a copy of this resolution and duly executed copy of this contract will be filed with the Office of the City Clerk. And joining us this evening, we have Joanne, Joelle and Henry.
Well, dating from Plainfield, my father was one of nine children, raised over on Arlington Avenue, in a house that no longer exists, and he was very proud to be one of the four people, they were separated once they got to Tuskegee, but they knew, not only did they know each other, but there are stories to tell, which I will help Ethel Washington enhance, about their tutelage there, they thought that they would be broadening their horizons and widening their skills, and I have very much appreciated all that they had given this community and all that Plainfield has given to them, that can't be underestimated. And you know, at the time, there was, it was a smaller community of black people, so they definitely knew each other, and I have heard stories, and their children knew each other, and their grandchildren knew each other. So we're very fortunate to still have those connections. Thank you, thank you all, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We gladly present you with this resolution recognizing the enormity of the contributions made, and so, here you go.
Thank you, and thank you, Plainfield, and thank you, ma'am.
You are welcome.
Go anywhere.
And we'll take a photo, so don't run away.
Yes, yes. We'll roll eyes all over.
(Inaudible)
Just a reminder, for the Division of Parks and Recreation, honored by History Month, we're offering a viewing of The Six Triple Eight in Plainfield, July three, on February eleventh, and we're doing a viewing of Black Wings in honor of the black aviators from the City of Plainfield, so I hope that you can join us. And for everybody else, I know Mayor Mapp and I will look forward to seeing you at Grits and Giggles on Friday at the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, so thank you again.
Absolutely. I love when we highlight our history like that, it just goes to show, you know, for those who are watching and kids who are growing up in Plainfield, the cream of the crop has come from Plainfield in all fields of endeavor, and it's, if we don't celebrate it, then who will, right? So it's up to us to celebrate our own, and I'm glad we took the opportunity to do that. We'll move on to the presentation with King University. Floor is yours.
Good evening, members of city council, President, Mayor Mapp, thank you for granting us the opportunity to speak about an initiative that has the propensity to advance education, healthcare, and community development in Plainfield. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge Dean James Conopac from King University's College of Health Professions, Senior Vice President Dr. Michael Salvatore, and Managing Director Jason Platas. Joining me as well tonight is General Counsel Dr. Elnardo Webster, and my name is Dr. Julie Bun, representing College Achieve Central. Before providing additional details about the King University Collaborative, I would like to provide some general context about College Achieve Central and its role in Plainfield and North Plainfield communities. College Achieve Central is a public charter school committed to preparing every scholar for success in college and beyond. College Achieve Central was established in two thousand fifteen and serves approximately fifteen hundred students with a strong focus on academic excellence, equity, and opportunity. The school's mission is to ensure that students are equipped to excel in rigorous educational settings and to graduate from some of the nation's top colleges and universities. By prioritizing individual instruction, advanced coursework, and character development, College Achieve plays a vital role in fostering educational opportunities. In fact, College Achieve Central's graduating classes have the distinction of a one hundred percent graduation rate for all three years, a one hundred percent college acceptance rate, and uniquely, this is with every College Achieve Central student taking at least three advanced placement courses. In alignment with this mission, College Achieve Central is proud to collaborate with King University, a partner with strong established relationships with the school communities and union, and in fact, across the globe, on an ambitious and transformative project. This partnership is designed to bring dual enrollment, shared services, and community healthcare to the historic Muhlenberg Hospital site. The Muhlenberg Hospital site has long been a cornerstone of Plainfield's history. Repurposing this site into a hub for education and healthcare allows us to preserve its legacy while meeting the modern needs of the community. This vision reflects our shared commitment to innovate while providing access and education and healthcare services, and ensures that Plainfield remains at the forefront of regional development. There are two key goals of the initiative, the first is to expand educational opportunities. Through dual enrollment programs, students will have access to college-level courses in health professions such as autonomy, medical terminology, and public health. The program could also offer a seamless pathway from earning a certified nursing assistant CNA credential to enrolling in King University's Bachelor of Science in Nursing Program, with tuition discounts to reduce financial barriers for students who both attend CAPS and those students from across the community who would also benefit from innovative educational access. The second goal is to drive economic and workforce development with graduates and their families. By training culturally competent healthcare professionals locally, this initiative addresses workforce shortages while creating jobs in education, healthcare, and facility management. The revitalization of the Muhlenberg site will undoubtedly attract investment, bringing long-term economic benefits to the City of Plainfield. We anticipate this initiative will be rolled out in three phases aligning with Beth's practices. We will begin with a planning phase where formal agreements will be established between King University and College Achieve Central. Community forums will ensure local stakeholders have a voice in the shaping of this project, and a comprehensive renovation and operational plan for the Muhlenberg site will be developed. Next, we will begin pilot implementation, where the dual enrollment programs will launch with an initial cohort of students pursuing the CNA credentials and beyond. And finally, expansion, where additional healthcare services and academic programs will be introduced. The center will become a model of education and healthcare integration supporting advanced degree attainment in fields like public health and speech and language sciences. We understand that making this vision a reality requires careful logistical planning, of which we will start in the planning phase. Key considerations though also include transportation. College Achieve will conduct a comprehensive study to ensure transportation and facility access will minimize any disruptions to the community and maximize positive community impact. In addition, partnerships with local transit providers will provide further community access. And as we reflect on yesterday's remembrance of Martin Luther King Day, I envision the CAPS community giving back substantially to the City of Plainfield through specific service projects. The second consideration is the facility utilization. Shared classrooms and labs will maximize the use of the Muhlenberg site while reducing operational costs, and not just for King, and not just for College Achieve Central, but for Plainfield Public Schools and other partners who would like to take advantage of those opportunities as well. This initiative represents a unique opportunity for Plainfield to lead in combining education and healthcare for the benefit of our communities. We are asking for your support in facilitating the necessary logistical infrastructure and in engaging the broader community to bring this vision to life. Together, we can continue to enhance Plainfield successes, one where education and healthcare intersect to uplift the community and continue to transform lives. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
and those students from across the community who would also benefit from innovative educational access. The second goal is to drive economic and workforce development with graduates and their families. By training culturally competent healthcare professionals locally, this initiative addresses workforce shortages while creating jobs in education, healthcare, and facility management. The revitalization of the Muhlenberg site will undoubtedly attract investment, bringing long-term economic benefits to the city of Plainfield. We anticipate this initiative will be rolled out in three phases aligning with Beth's practices. We will begin with a planning phase where formal agreements will be established between King University and College Achieved Central. Community forums will ensure local stakeholders have a voice in the shaping of this project, and a comprehensive renovation and operational plan for the Muhlenberg site will be developed. Next, we will begin pilot implementation, where the dual enrollment programs will launch with an initial cohort of students pursuing the CNA credentials and beyond. And finally, expansion, where additional healthcare services and academic programs will be introduced. The center will become a model of education and healthcare integration, supporting advanced degree attainment in fields like public health and speech and language sciences. We understand that making this vision a reality requires careful logistical planning, of which we will start in the planning phase. Key considerations, though, also include transportation. College Achieved will conduct a comprehensive study to ensure transportation and facility access will minimize any disruptions to the community and maximize positive community impact. In addition, partnerships with local transit providers will provide further community access. And as we reflect on yesterday's remembrance of Martin Luther King Day, I envision the CAPS community giving back substantially to the city of Plainfield through specific service projects. The second consideration is the facility utilization. Shared classrooms and labs will maximize the use of the Muhlenberg site while reducing operational costs, and not just for King and not just for College Achieved Central, but for Plainfield Public Schools and other partners who would like to take advantage of those opportunities as well. This initiative represents a unique opportunity for Plainfield to lead in combining education and healthcare for the benefit of our communities. We are asking for your support in facilitating the necessary logistical infrastructure and in engaging the broader community to bring this vision to life. Together, we can continue to enhance Plainfield's successes, one where education and healthcare intersect to uplift the community and continue to transform lives. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from councilmembers?
I've got a question. The proposed campus, is that going to be CAPS-only location, or is this going to be an additional location?
This will be an in-addition location, but we will probably wind up reallocating some of the grades from different buildings that we have now.
Okay.
That was my only question. Go right ahead.
Let me first say, I think this sounds like an amazing opportunity for the residents of Plainfield and also providing workforce development. You mentioned that the Plainfield residents will have access to that. What does that look like?
I think we envision the facilities being open on weekends and evenings to be utilized by community groups. We're open to it. I think it makes sense the way we're going to lay it out and be happy to work with other interested, you know, nonprofit organizations. We want to be a community hub.
And as I was reading through the backup, you mentioned... I'm good, thank you.
Any other councilmember wish to chime in?
Yes, Council President through the chair. I have a few questions here. First, I would like to say thank you for this presentation, and it's good to hear that you have King University as a partner, and it's always good to have a university have some space here in the city of Plainfield. So the question is, does this program aim to complement or compete with the Plainfield Public School District initiatives?
I think it's a complement. I think, I'm sure that we'd be happy to incorporate them. I don't know what, I know they have some initiatives right now with King, and King is expanding its public health initiative. I don't, we don't see this as an exclusivity type thing. We want to work with everyone.
Okay. All right. Next question. What is the projected enrollment capacity, and how will it scale over time?
I think we would prefer to get back to that question specifically through President Chair, but we do believe somewhere around 500. The reason why I would like to provide more specificity is because there is some opportunity with the grade configuration that may be able to be housed at that site between a seven through 12 facility versus that of a nine through 12 facility. So I really just want to make sure that we have factual information for you.
Okay. All right. The next question is, you spoke about economic development, so how many jobs will this create for Plainfield residents, and what type of roles will be available?
I mean, we'd have obviously some construction jobs. I mean, we work with the, you know, First Source folks in the town. We're building out the facility. I think a lot of our employees are already from Plainfield. We have a lot of people that work at our buildings and currently in our school that are from Plainfield. Obviously, those people are going to still be there, but as we expand and grow, you know, I think we like to hire local first, and we like to, to be quite honest, hire, you know, family and friends of our students, to be quite honest. We've done pretty well with that. So I think it's going to be very good for Plainfield. I think there'll be, I don't know the number of jobs. I mean, we can run the math on the construction budget and come up with a number. Permanent jobs, I think we have, what do we have in CAPS Central? How many, what's the, how many people we have working for us? Probably have 130, 140 people working in CAPS in the Plainfield schools.
Okay. And you kind of hit on this, but I just wanted to ensure for the record, will Plainfield-based contractors or businesses be prioritized in construction and operation contracts, operational contracts?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And lastly, this is for the administration, and I mention this because the superintendent of the Plainfield Public School District, he penned a letter to the editor of Tapping Two, asking for a moratorium on the expansion of charter schools until disparities are addressed, and he asked that the NJ DOE also got involved and intervene to kind of create that framework so that we can work collaboratively together. So I asked the council, and first the administration, did we reach out to the Plainfield Public School District and ask what impact this will have on the district and their budget as well? We'll have to answer that now. And to the council, did we reach out to our other elected officials here in the city of Plainfield, which consists of the commissioners of the Plainfield Board of Education, to create some dialogue and kind of get their perspective on this before we push this forward? So I know personally that the answer is no. So I just asked if we just take time to, one, if we can table this, let me do this correctly, I put a motion on the floor that we table this until the next meeting, we can schedule a meeting with the New Jersey Department of Education, representatives, of course, the Plainfield Public School District, the superintendent, including the commissioners of the Plainfield Board of Education, and also all of the leadership of the charter schools. We see that the need is collaboration, so let's fill that need by leading by example, getting together, sitting down, and talking through these things so we can bring projects like this to fruition, but making sure that we're working together when it comes to education here in the city of Plainfield. There is a motion on the floor.
Council President? Just like to know, we're at the workshop shop part of the meeting?
Right.
Where we gather consensus to add it to the regular meeting? So we first have to determine whether or not we have a consensus to add it to the agenda. The proper time to table it would be during the regular meeting.
Okay.
Vice President Sessi, go next.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, and I want to thank you for your presentation. I am a big champion of education. I know what it's like to have educators say that a child that looks like you will never grow up and amount to anything. I remember my third-grade teacher making that comment, and here I am, five degrees later, one of them from an Ivy League school. And so I am a big supporter of our children in this community getting the same opportunities that I got, if not more. I see this as groundbreaking. We all know, if you look at cities that are also college towns, there's a major impact on that city. So I'm super excited about that, but I'm also excited about the fact that you're filling a career gap that we know, an industry that's hurting right now. We have had many of the nurses' associations come before us, talking about just how much overtime they are working because they don't have nurses and other folks filling those medical roles, and we have an opportunity for our children to go to a top university and get a world-class education, as King likes to say, for our kids and our community. So we can have conversations about collaboration, but let's get this done for our kids.
Thank you. Mayor, did you want to say something?
Well, thank you, Council President. I just want to add a few very brief remarks, and I'll just like to respond to, you know, some of the concerns that were echoed by one of the members of this body. And that is to say that the administration has been working collaboratively, cooperatively, with our Plainfield School District. Director of Economic Development, Zinobia Fields, has met several times with the superintendent of schools, with the president of the Board of Education, and has introduced both to a number of developers. We have toured sites around the city, and we are doing everything that we can to assist the school district, to help them to meet some of their need for space. And this is an ongoing conversation, but we have been very transparent in terms of the interaction between my administration, led by Director Fields, the superintendent of schools, and the board president in terms of introductions, the developers, the touring of facilities, and we will continue to do that because we are here to help. Now, what I heard presented here this evening is about the intersection of healthcare, academics, economics, partnerships, and the many ancillary services that will benefit from this kind of a partnership. And this is something that I believe most members of this governing body, the residents of this entire city, will get behind because it is a game changer. It is transformative, and that is what we all ought to be about. And so I will just like to appeal to you, the members of the governing body, to recognize something that is great when you see it, when you hear it, and what you've just heard presented here. It doesn't get any better. And I would like to close by this. I also heard you mention 100% graduation rate, 100% college acceptance rate. What more do we want? It doesn't get better. And that is what we want to see for every student that is living in Plainfield, every student in the surrounding areas, because I'm not going to limit this just to Plainfield, but Plainfield is the primary beneficiary of what is to come to that campus. And so I ask for your support, councilmembers. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right, go right ahead.
I did have a question. So would there be a cost associated to these training programs for the youth and/or the Plainfield residents?
So, I mean, we're still working on a lot of those things. The reality is, is that we're going to, the biggest goal for us is to be able to get our kids what we call dual enrolled, right? So we're going to wind up paying King, CAPS is going to pay King, but the kids are not going to pay CAPS. So it will be no cost to the kids. I'm not sure how the rest of the community is going to plug into that and how they're going to pay, but we have to pay King. But we believe that it makes sense for us to dual enroll because our kids are going to get three things at one time. They're going to get AP credits, they're going to get, they're going to get college credits, and they're going to get credits towards graduating high school. So it's a no-brainer for us to be able to combine them in these programs, and we think that, you know, it makes sense to, you know, a lot of our kids, we've, one of the reasons we're doing this is because we realized a lot of our kids are trying to have to work during college, and so if we can give them 60 credits, you know, before they get to college, and a job essentially where they can make, you know, $40,000, $50,000 instead of 15 bucks an hour while they're in college, it makes their college experience a lot different. So one of the things we're trying to really focus on is, what are the impediments for not just getting our 100% of kids getting admitted to college, but how do we graduate, you know, 70, 80, 90% of them from college, right? So that's, that's our goal. And what we realize is that this opportunity is there, this hospital slash campus is there, King is expanding its health services, and so it just all kind of came together, and it makes a lot of sense for us. It makes an enormous amount of sense for us. I think it makes an enormous amount of sense for King to have a footprint in Plainfield. I think it makes a lot of sense for Plainfield to have a school that's already doing very well, have a combination with the university that's killing the game under a president and a ma, you know, a lot of people are kind of looking, this makes sense. And so we're comfortable that, if we can get you guys comfortable, that this is going to work. And we think if we do it right, it'll be a natural model, because what we're doing, our school, relatively young school, is already one of the top, academically, one of the top 20, 25 public schools in the state of New Jersey. And from a black and brown standpoint, it's probably the number two or three in the state of New Jersey. So we are real comfortable and real excited about the numbers that are coming out, and where a lot of schools kind of went down after COVID, you know, we've continued to grow. So excited about the whole platform. And if we can make this combination work, we want to upgrade our facilities. We think this is an upgrade to, if we can build it out the way we see it, if we can get some amazing kind of college-level professors to come in and teach our chemistry and biology and the hard sciences, we think that that starts to break down, and we also think that that helps our kids get into better schools because now they've got a huge STEM foundation. And a lot of kids are kind of afraid of that, but a lot of colleges are offering a lot of money for kids who are interested in studying STEM. So it just makes sense for us, and makes, I think it makes sense for you guys because at the end of the day, our 1,600 or 1,700 kids are your kids, you know, so I think it makes sense for you guys, and we're excited about it.
But if I can just add, I want to be very clear in our conversations with King, this was not a conversation about College Achieved Central.
Right.
This was a conversation about the city of Plainfield and the scholars and students of Plainfield. So I do just want to make sure that I represent fairly that King University is partnering for the sheer fact that this model has the ability to transform, and that is not specific to any school that a child in Plainfield attends. That's specific to King representing that they really care deeply about the trajectory of students. And I think, I just want to make sure that while this is something that would have direct facility access, as a charter school, we need school facilities, but that doesn't mean that that access is not available to other students and partners who would like to participate.
Okay.
Quick question.
Sure.
Do you have to test to get into the program? How does that work? Or is everybody eligible? How does that work?
It's a public charter school, so it's open to any member of the public who meets the age requirements. The way that charter school enrollment does work is because College Achieved Central has more interested scholars than they have seats. It's a lottery, but it is a blind lottery system. The dual enrollment in general and some of those shared services that we contemplate should, you know, we continue to move forward, would have some sort of requirements in order to matriculate. So meeting the credit requirement, meeting the grade requirement for those credits to count towards either their King future education or those credits that they would achieve as a high school student.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't miss it, but where's the location? Where's the location going to be? Do you have a location in mind?
Muhlenberg, the old Muhlenberg Hospital.
The old Muhlenberg Hospital. Okay.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
So I do understand, like I said, again, thank you for the excellent presentation, and it was said, when you see something great, recognize it and get behind it. But I implore you to also do your due diligence and just talk to the people who elected, one, the same people that elected everybody here, they elected the commissioners on the Plainfield Board of Education. It seems like you're okay and willing to sit at a table and have that discussion, and I bring that up because there are five charter schools in Union County. All five are right here in the city of Plainfield. So not saying that we need to not go forward with this project, but it's worth having the conversation if we're really serious about making a change here in the city of Plainfield when it comes to education. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, the 2024 council committees have been established and delivered to council members. We're going to take a short recess, just two minutes. A lot of folks came here for the ceremonial aspect, and you're welcome to stay, but some may want to leave. So I want to, want you to be able to do that without much interruption of our business. So recess for two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Council President. As you can see, our esteemed business administrator is not with us this evening, so I'll be doing my best to handle her items. As you can see, R-56 and R-57 were matters that were previously presented, and we ask that they be added for consensus.
Okay. Questions from council members regarding these items? Any? Okay, do we have a consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions on any items in legislative body? Okay. Those shall be added to the consent agenda. We next move to the business administration items. Would the Corporation Council, Council please present those items?
Yes, thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. As you can see, our esteemed business administrator is not with us this evening, so I'll be doing my best to handle her items. As you can see, R-56 and R-57 were matters that were previously presented, and we ask that they be added for consensus.
Okay. Questions from council members regarding these items? Any? Okay, do we have a consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions on any items in legislative body? Okay. Those shall be added to the consent agenda. We next move to the business administration items. Would the Corporation Council, Council please present those items? Yes, thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. As you can see, our esteemed business administrator is not with us this evening, so I'll be doing my best to handle her items. As you can see, R-56 and R-57 were matters that were previously presented, and we ask that they be added for consensus.
Okay. Questions from council members regarding these items? Any? Okay, do we have a consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that shall, those shall be added. Okay, Corporation Council.
Thank you, Council President. Under Corporation Council, we have items R-58 to R-67. These are all of the legal services that will be required for the year for the city of Plainfield. If you think of the city of Plainfield as a, basically a, over a $100 million corporation, there are numerous legal services that are required to service the city of Plainfield throughout the year. Specifically, those are Redevelopment Council, Labor Council, Litigation Council, and Tax Appeals. Those services are all covered within the professionals provided, and I am happy to answer any specific questions about those specific professionals. Most, all save one, are repeats from prior years who have a track record of success for the city. But of course, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Council President.
Questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
So, I see there are a number of renewal of awards and also vendor agreements on the agenda. Does the city, when you're awarding contracts, do you award them with the DEI perspective or use a framework?
As far as, well, by law, we are required, well, no, actually not by law, we are, in the city of Plainfield, what we call a fair and open process. What that is, we look at qualifications, we look at your track record, we look at your expertise, we look at your experience. Do we, do we have a formal policy of awarding contracts to women or minority-owned businesses over other law firms? We do not. However, if you look at the actual award of contracts, all save one of our prosecutors, public defenders, and judges are either women or minorities. If you look here, there are actually four law firms which are, where our representation is through a minority attorney. So, if you look at our actual track record, I think it's pretty good and it speaks for itself. However, is there a formalized process which prioritizes? No, we do not do that. Hopefully that answered your question.
It does, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Council President, I would like to abstain from one of them.
Okay.
R-58-25.
Council President, pursuant to our rules, that requires a separate vote.
Yes. Yep. So, can we remove that one? And do we have consensus to add all except for that one? Yes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Opposition? Okay. All right, that shall be added to the voting meeting with the exception of the, the one that is noted by Council, Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President.
Yep. Okay, the Department of Finance, please present your items.
Mr. President, I will be presenting the items on behalf of the Department of Finance, beginning with O-68, which is a resolution to award a one-year contract to Selective Benefits Group. And Selective Benefits Group manages the 457B for the city. There are two 457B plans that we have. One is with Nationwide, the other is with Empower. And the fees for selective benefits come from the two plans from Nationwide as well as from Empower. R-069 is a resolution approving qualified vendors and service providers in accordance with NJSA. And the backup for that, the backup is attached, and basically, this is something that we do on an annual basis to approve a list of qualified vendors, and from that list, contracts can be awarded. O-7025, a resolution authorizing the adoption of the current fund, parking utility and solid waste utility and sewer utility temporary budget. And what we're doing here is inserting a grant into the temporary budget that was already introduced at the reorganization meeting. If we are to be able to access those grant funds, those funds would have to be inserted into the budget, and the vehicle to do that, given that we don't have an adopted budget, would be the temporary budget. R-071 is a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations in the calendar year 2024 budget to the tune of $562,000. And what this is basically doing is that when you end the year December 31st, any appropriations that are not spent roll over into what is known as an appropriation reserves. From those reserves, bills from the prior year can be paid against those reserves. And so that's what we're doing here. We're making provisions from the appropriation reserves to be able to pay for outstanding obligations from the prior year. Resolution O-72 is a resolution authorizing the city of Plainfield to enter into contracts with certain state-approved vendors, and these approved vendors pertain to the fire department. Similarly, O-73, we're doing a similar thing as it relates to the IT department. O-74, also very similar, in this case, it's the public works department. Resolution O-75, authorizing the city of Plainfield to enter into, into contracts with certain approved vendors for, for contracting purposes. This is similar to the previous three. This pertains to vendors for the purchasing, for, um, purchasing department. These are all state contract vendors. O-76, a resolution authorizing the city of Plainfield to enter into contracts with certain state-approved vendors, and this pertain to solid waste and sewer. We contract with a number of vendors on an annual basis, and this is making provisions for us to be able to award contracts. O-77, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a couple of low sulfur diesel fuel to the tune of $430,000. And this is being done through the Morris County Co-op that allows us to purchase directly from the co-op without having to go out for a separate bid because this co-op has already gone out to the market to solicit bids, and so we're able to make purchases through this Morris County Co-op. And we do this on an annual basis. O-79, resolution authorizing the purchase, again, of, I, I think I might have skipped O-78, but that is a very similar resolution authorizing the purchase of, of heat and oil, and that's also through the Morris County Co-op. O-79 is a backup for Resolution O-77, a similar purchase. And if we need to utilize that particular, that particular purchasing program, it's the Huntington County Educational Services Commission, which is another cooperative purchasing program. O-80 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of unleaded automatic automotive gasoline, and that will be done through a state contract. These state contracts, the state normally goes out on an annual basis or biannual, and they secure the best prices, which allows municipalities and counties to purchase using these state contract vendors. O-81 is a resolution authorizing the approval to cancel taxes in the amount of $14,000. This was as a result of 100% tax exemption. This pertains to a nonprofit which is a taxable entity, and once the proper research and proof was made, we need to refund the taxes to this nonprofit. O-82 is a resolution authorizing tax refunds on properties per the attached schedule that was provided, and this is due to successful tax appeals, overpayment, and other erroneous payments. And Mr. President and Council, that concludes the Finance Department's presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from council members?
I have a quick question. Thank you, Mayor, for the presentation. You must have been looking at my notes, because the one question I had was about the, the use of the state-approved vendors. Very familiar with that process, and you're absolutely right. It is highly regulated, monitored, so that the state can procure at the best prices. I'm wondering, if you're seeing, are you gonna see that as a trend, that maybe Plainfield will start moving, moving closer to using more and more state-approved vendors for our purchasing?
Well, quite frankly, we do use a plethora of state vendors for any number of items, and we do it rather consistently, either state vendors or vendors that have been qualified through cooperative agreements, such as the Morris County Co-op, the Union County Co-op, or in one case here, the Huntington County Co-op. So, state contracts as well as cooperatives, we use them quite a bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other council members?
Yes, question. And this is just an overview of all of the contracts. So, as we all are aware, last year, the New Jersey disparity study was a study that they looked at the availability and utilization of small minority women and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. And just looking at some of this data, I just pulled it up, black Americans represent 9.19% of the available construction businesses and received 0.14% of the dollars on construction contracts. Asian-Americans, 6.43%, they receive 2.03% of the dollars on construction contracts. Hispanic-Americans represent 11.65%, and they receive 1.5% of the dollars. Women businesses represent 24.48%, and they receive 8.73%. So, as we are awarding these contracts, are we keeping this in mind? And I know that we're looking at the, uh, state contracts and the qualified vendors, but are we paying attention to this study and making sure that some of the minority businesses are able to get some of these contracts?
We are very familiar with the disparity study, and what the disparity study suggests is that there are grave disparities in purchasing across the state of New Jersey at the state level and at the municipal level. But Plainfield doesn't make the laws that govern the state in terms of who we can procure goods and services from. And so we utilize the state laws in order to better facilitate the purchases that we need here in the city of Plainfield. So, yes, the New Jersey Urban Mayors Association, we have been beating that drum about the disparity study and the inequities that exist within state contracting and purchases and so on. But there's a fix that needs to be done at the state level, and we will continue, the New Jersey Urban Mayors and all of its member municipalities, to be drum majors to try to get the state to address the disparities that exist. It's a big, big problem that requires a significant amount of attention from our state legislative leaders, and Plainfield will do its part, the urban mayors will do its part as well, to not only call attention but to seek solutions. But in the meantime, we follow what we are able to follow in order to facilitate the expediting of goods and services to the city of Plainfield and its residents.
Council President?
Go right ahead.
If I may. In response to the shameless disparity study, there are 12 bills that have currently been approved unanimously by the Assembly's Committee on Development and Women's Affairs that are targeting this racial injustice. I know the committee is being led by the Chairwoman of the Black Caucus, Siobhan Sumters, so we should be paying close attention to those bills and seeing how we can then take from those bills and implement in our city. So, this is definitely something we wanna keep an eye on at the state level.
Through the chair? Yes, and I understand that we don't govern the state level, but we do govern the local level here. So, I just wanna make sure that we're not only just watching, but we are doing what we can do on the local level to close this disparity and this wealth gap that's been happening for far too long here in the state of New Jersey.
And that's a good point, Counselor. What we do on an annual basis is that we publish RFPs and RFQs. And when we do that, we are basically advertising for all qualified professionals, qualified vendors to come forward, let us know that you have a good or a service to offer to the city, and you are invited to submit a response to the RFPs and the RFQs. And we also have bids which are different from RFPs and RFQs, and anyone can submit a response to those bids. And as far as bids are concerned, we have to go with the lowest accepted, the, with the lowest responsive bid, whoever submits that. So, we can't, if we even wanted to, if there were two bids coming in, one from a black person, one from a white person, we can't necessarily give it to the black person simply on that basis. It has to be the lowest responsive and responsible response to that particular bid. So, there are guidelines that we must follow when it comes to procurement.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so do we have consensus to add these?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those items shall be added to the voting meeting.
try to get the state to address the disparities that exist. It's a big, big problem that requires a significant amount of attention from our state legislative leaders, and Plainfield will do its part, the Urban Mayors will do its part as well, to not only call attention, but to seek solutions. But in the meantime, we follow what we are able to follow in order to facilitate the expediting of goods and services to the city of Plainfield and its residents.
Council President?
Go ahead.
If I may, in response to the shameless disparity study, there are twelve bills that have currently been approved unanimously by the Assembly's Committee on Development and Women's Affairs that are targeting this racial injustice. I know the committee is being led by the Chairwoman of the Black Caucus, Siobhan Sumters, so we should be paying close attention to those bills and seeing how we can then take from those bills and implement in our city. So this is definitely something we want to keep an eye on at the state level.
Through the chair, one more time.
Sure.
Yes, and I understand that we don't govern the state level, but we do govern the local level here, so I just want to make sure that we're not only just watching, but we are doing what we can do on the local level to close this disparity and this wealth gap that's been happening for far too long here in the state of New Jersey.
And that's a good point, Counselor. What we do on an annual basis is that we publish RFPs and RFQs, and when we do that, we are basically advertising for all qualified professionals, qualified vendors to come forward. Let us know that you have a good or a service to offer to the city, and you are invited to submit a response to the RFPs and the RFQs. And we also have bids, which are different from RFPs and RFQs, and anyone can submit a response to those bids. And as far as bids are concerned, we have to go with the lowest accepted, with the lowest responsive bid, whoever submits that. So we can't, if we even wanted to, if there were two bids coming in, one from a black person, one from a white person, we can't necessarily give it to the black person simply on that basis. It has to be the lowest responsive and responsible response to that particular bid. So they're guidelines that we must follow when it comes to procurement.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so do we have consensus to add these?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those items shall be added to the voting meeting. Okay, Department of Public Works, please present your items.
Good evening, Mr. Council President. Members of the council, Department of Public Works, that's seven resolutions present. Resolution ROE three-two-five, approving qualified vendors for engineering services. We have five submissions. Resolution zero-eight-four-two-five is measures approving qualified vendors for architectural services. We have five submissions for that. Resolution oh-eight-two-five, resolution support city of Plainfield for submitting applications to Department of Community Affairs for the amount of hundred thousand dollars for the Hannah Acton's playground. Resolution oh-eight-six-two-five, resolution authorized for professional service contracts and only associates, not to exceed hundred thousand dollars. This is for one-year period. Resolution eight-seven-two-five, resolution authorized approval for street opening at four hundred Grant Avenue, and everything done here will be done back curd-to-curd. We'll monitor that. It's approved by council. Resolution eight-eight-two-five, resolution authorized for professional service contracts in Arlington and Burnet. This is for floodplain management services, not to exceed forty thousand dollars for one-year period. Resolution eighty-nine-two-five, authorized for a contractor to acquire your engineering for the safe routes through improvements project in an amount not to exceed four hundred nine thousand, twenty-sixty-nine dollars, and this is all grant-funded through Federal Highway Administration and the DOT, no cost to the state.
Okay, do we have questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Some.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, shall be added, and we're moving to the Department of Economic Development.
Good evening, council. I have resolutions zero-ninety dash twenty-five through one-oh-three dash twenty-five for presentation. So the first resolution is related to the presentation that we saw from King University as well as college-achieved public schools. This is to enter into a letter of intent, moving forward with what was proposed today. The next resolution is related to the JFK Hospital redevelopment site, Milenburg redevelopment site. This is to add primary education on through high school to, as one of the uses to the redevelopment plan. The next resolution is to do a redevelopment agreement for the, it's actually to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the developer, East Fifth Street Plainfield LLC. This is the developer that will be doing the Center of Excellence. The Center of Excellence memorandum of understanding relates to the purchase and sell of properties as well as moving forward with a number of the contracts that are associated with affordable housing. It also relates to the community benefit agreement. The next resolution, or the next, looking at zero-ninety-three dash twenty-five through zero-ninety-six dash twenty-five, these are all related to returns of performance bonds. All of these projects, the construction has been completed. There is no longer a use to hold the maintenance bond for these projects. The next resolution is to perform an area in need of redevelopment study. This is for two-oh-eight to two-twenty-two Lee Place. This is looking for a study for the possibility of affordable townhomes for sale. The next resolution is granting permission for the planning board to reexamine TOD South redevelopment plan. This would reexamine the plan for additional uses, specifically looking at the uses of educational facilities as well as parking. The next resolution, or rather, the next resolution is going from zero-ninety-nine dash two, one-oh-three dash twenty-five. These are all related to professional services contracts. The first one is related to our redevelopment planner, which would be CME Associates, redevelopment planner for the planning board. Also, the next one is related to CME, our planning board engineer, then the Schwain Group as our redevelopment planner, our board attorney for both the planning board as well as the zoning board. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
I have a question. I'm sorry. R-zero-ninety-seven dash twenty-five, where you said the townhouses are going to be, going to possibly be placed? How many townhouses is the first question? And I believe this site was the old Magnella cleaners, and I just want to reassure that there's no contamination in that ground, because this was the old Magnella cleaners. For those who've been in Plainfield a long time, you would know that.
So this is just for a study. We do not have the concept for the number of townhomes yet. The second one, the cleaners, they are responsible for doing the remediation of the site, and they have already reached out to us.
So in other words, it has been done?
No, it's being, it's, the soil still has to be tested.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Cherry?
Yes, for R-zero-nine-zero dash twenty-five, the presentation with King, what is the timeline? I know they talked about the three phases, but what is the timeline to start? Actually, is it the build? Is the Milenburg? Does it need a big, a lot of rehab? Like, what does that look like?
So this building right now, this was a part of the redevelopment of the entire Milenburg site. So currently, right now, they have a shell of a building. It hasn't been a tenant fit out, so that's what they still need to do. Right now, we are at the point of doing a letter of intent between the organizations, being King Caps and the city of Plainfield. Once that is reached, they still have to decide what's going to be built, whether they're going to purchase or lease or go from there. In terms of having the fit out done, we should know by the spring which the timeline for construction.
Thank you.
The council members?
Yes, R-zero-ninety dash twenty-five, again, I ask the council to make a motion to the council to table this until we are able to have a conversation with the Superintendent of Schools, the Commissioners of the Plainfield Board of Education, representatives of the New Jersey Department of Education, and also the leadership of charter schools before we move forward with this project. It's simple, we can just have a conversation with them to get an understanding of how this will impact the school district. We cannot call them community partners and do things to undermine the things and initiatives that they have and are pushing forward. So many of you just think, okay, this is a great opportunity, let's get behind it, but there's a price per pupil for each child in the city of Plainfield. If a child decides, if a parent says, you know what, I want my child to go to a charter school, that money follows that child to the charter school. We don't know what's going on with budgets. As you know, we just had a new president and administration get sworn in yesterday. So I believe that if we want to work together as a city, and we're serious about education for our students, that we would come together and have this conversation with all the parties that was named previously. There is a motion on the floor.
Council President.
So it seems to be, we can take that one off the voting meeting. We'll vote on it separately.
Take her off the consent.
Off the consent.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that it would probably be taken off consent, but that that motion can be made, but it would be made at the, at the regular voting meeting. Yes, correct.
Exactly. So, okay, any other questions from council members regarding the items?
The, the, the zero, zero, nine-zero dash twenty-five, just one other simple question. I meant to ask them while they were still here, and maybe you can pass along this message. I just want to know, what does that look like being by the Milenburg School of Nursing? That, I hope that don't collaborate with them also as well for the health services. I just wanted, yeah.
Sure, it is a different curriculum, which some of it was described in the concept paper, but as we get more details, we will be able to share it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so do we have a consensus to add all items except for the item, R-ninety?
Yes.
To the voting meeting? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those will be added to the voting meeting with the exception of R-ninety, which will be voted on separately. The Department of Health and Social Services, floor is yours.
Good evening, council. I have two items, one oh-five and one oh-five twenty-five. One oh-four twenty-five is our annual submission to continue our shared agreement with the county, Union County, for our funding. This is actually our fifth, first year, our fiftieth year in which we participate in our program. The second one is a new resolution to the city. It's in collaboration with National League of Cities, and it's recognizing earned income tax credit. What, what we have discovered is that many individuals who are working class or have not fully participated and used this earned income credit, and it could provide up to eight thousand dollars when you do get taxes. So what we're going to do on that recognition day is we're going to mail out things to individual institutions so that they can have that information. Of course, we're going to use social media, but what we're going to do, and it's going to be in March, actually, is we will have a VISA program, and the VISA program is free tax assistance for individuals, so they will be coming to, to free tax assistance, and that will start in March, on March twelfth, November twelfth, and that's in partnership with a nonprofit. So we're really kind of excited about this program, and we're excited to do it, and we look forward to your support.
Questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Some.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. The Department of Sewer and Solid Waste.
Good evening, Council President, Council. I have three resolutions for your consideration tonight, R-one-oh-six through R-one-oh-eight. R-one-oh-six is a resolution approving qualified vendors for engineering services for the sewer and solid waste utility. We receive three proposals. R-one-oh-seven is a resolution authorizing the order for professional services for engineering services for solid waste and sewer in an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand eight ninety-seven. One-oh-eight is a resolution to purchase three new 2025 Ford F-150 pickup trucks with snowplow packages under the Morris County Co-op in an amount not to exceed one-fifty-one seven seventy-eight seventy. Any questions?
Any questions from council members? Okay, do we have a consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. Corporation Council, please list the ordinances on first reading.
Thank you, Council President. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our first ordinance this evening, which is an ordinance to establish rent control in the city of Plainfield. As you may recall, beginning in the fourth quarter of last year, and then at the reorganization meeting on January first, the mayor set the ambitious agenda to establish rent control legislation. It would be the first initiative of the Office of Homelessness Prevention. To that end, as, as the mayor promised, we have tonight, for consideration by the council, an ordinance to establish rent control in the city of Plainfield. This is a very comprehensive piece of legislation. It's approximately twenty pages long, so I'll do my best to summarize it in very broad strokes, and then happy to answer any questions that any council members might have about it. I think the first question is, what does rent control mean? What is a possible increase on a rent-controlled property? And the answer to that question is five percent. Any property that is subject to rent control within the city of Plainfield will have no greater than a five percent increase per year, per unit. What is, what units are covered? Well, not all units are covered, and unfortunately, state law dictates what we, what properties can and cannot be subject to rent control. Any property that is subject to a mortgage as the basis of its construction and building is exempt from rent control, or up to thirty years, whichever is less. So for instance, if a property has a fifteen-year mortgage on the property, it would be fifteen years exempt from rent control, and then rent control would take effect. There are also other properties that are exempt. Section Eight housing is completely exempt from rent control because Section Eight housing is federally preempted, and there is a whole body of law as to what is acceptable for, for, for Section Eight housing. There, so those are the, those are the types of properties that are exempt, and then you can tell that if it's not subject to exemption, it would be a five percent increase. There are certain increases that will, can go, though, beyond the, the five percent. If there is a large capital improvement to a specific property, they may be entitled to additional, additional rent. If there is a new assessment on the property and the taxes go up, a landlord may be subject to an increase. To help us regulate this and to make adjudicate any issues that exist between landlords and tenants, we also call for the creation of a rent leveling board. The rent leveling board will be a five-member board. In the ordinance presented this evening, it says that in order to be a member of the board, you have to be a resident or to be a landlord, but in consultation with the council vice president, we'd like to recommend an amendment tonight, which says that only one member of the board can be a landlord, and that all, the other four members must be residents. Those individuals will be nominated by the mayor with advice and consent of the governing body. There's also a provision that I want to draw, bring your attention to called vacancy decontrol. If, for instance, a, a tenant is to leave a property, I'm sorry, leave a unit, if the, the landlord can show that they've made improvements to that unit, they may be able to petition the rent leveling board to get the property to market rate. However, they can only do this once every three years, because we don't want to incentivize landlords to try to push out tenants so that they can get the rents back to market rate. So that's something I just want to draw your attention to. There's also a provision that if a landlord feels that there's a hardship specific to their particular property, they can petition the rent leveling board to have their rents increased by more than five percent. But obviously, that would have to be, there'd be an application made, and they would have to make their case to the rent leveling board. There are certain fees attached now to, to the registration of all units, and that you can see listed in the ordinance. I won't go through the fees, there's an exhaustive list, but the annual registration fee, at least off the bat, will be a ten dollar per dwelling unit. Who is to assist us in the, in the enforcement of, of this rent leveling ordinance? We will have a rent level, we will have a rent control officer, and this will not be a separate position, this will also, these duties will be done by the Director of the Office of Homelessness Prevention. So these two, these, these duties will be subsumed into that role, and they will be one and the same. So this is obviously a, a huge step in the affordability, in making Plainfield more affordable for tenants, and we put this forward for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
I've got one question so far. So with the property owner having a mortgage that would exempt them from the rent increase, mortgage is paid off, and they refinance, would that make them eligible again to, so it would be the original mortgage?
It's the original mortgage, correct. Now, i-if you're doing a very large or very substantial rehabilitation to a property, say you take a property that is really blighted, you can make an application to the rent leveling board to have that property exempt, but you would have to make your case to the rent leveling board, and you would have to ask for how many years you wanted that exemption. The rent leveling board would have that ability. I mean, but that would, that's only in the circumstance where it's incredibly blighted, but to your question specifically, just a refinance of an existing mortgage would not suffice. The rent control would go into effect.
Right, another question. So I guess how would we determine if the property owner actually has a real mortgage? Because sometimes, you know, we borrow hard money to rehabilitate a property, and that hard money has to be paid off with this, in a specific period of time, but it's not a mortgage.
Well, all that information will have to be provided to, upon your registration, your initial registration. It'll be incumbent upon the landlord to provide proof of that mortgage sufficient enough to satisfy the rent, the rent control officer. If they were not satisfied with the decision of the rent If they were not satisfied with the decision of the rent control officer, they could appeal that decision to the rent leveling board, but the landlord's gonna have to prove it.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Council President.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm gonna apologize, Mr. Machello, I have a list of questions, I'm gonna try to be as expeditious as possible. Uh, my first comment, and I reference this to you, but I wanna just put it on the record that, uh, we would want to move forward with language that was more gender neutral. The document, you know, continually refers to the term chair man and he, um, it could be a chair woman and she, um, so more gender neutral language such as chairperson would be appreciated if at all possible. Um, do we have a sense of how many dwellings in the city, um, fit the five or more units, um, at this point in time?
Um, I do not have, uh, a hard count for you, and I, I think through the registration process, we'll have a very good number, uh, but I do not have any preliminary numbers for you.
Okay, great. Um, are the rent leveling board, will the rent leveling board meetings be considered public meetings wherein agenda would have to be posted 48 hours, um, in the paper and in advance prior, as well as the meeting minutes?
Yes, they will, the rent leveling boards will be public meetings, they will be subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, must be noticed, must be public.
Okay.
And there must be an opportunity for the public to be heard.
Thank you. What training, um, or do we have an idea of what type of training the rent leveling board members would undergo, i.e. such as ethics, confidentiality, basic understanding of current statutes regarding rent? Do we have a, a sense of the training and will, will they undergo training?
Um, we, we can certainly, to, to meet the, that, that's an excellent question and we as, uh, we're like, the Office of Corporation Counsel could certainly provide some, uh, initial training. However, is there a formalized program statewide? No, there is not. Um, but I would, I welcome the opportunity to provide guidance, uh, to the members.
Yes, and if I may add, just like, uh, commissioners on housing authorities are required to take certain classes, although it's not a requirement here, you know, administratively, we would require members of the rent leveling board to get some formalized training.
Thank you. Um, throughout the document, it constantly references that there shall be notification made to tenants. Um, I would just want to emphasize that that notification should be made not only in English but in Spanish to make sure that the tenants, um, understand in their first language what the document is saying and have full understanding. Um, I also noticed in the document, we talked about, we u- we utilized the term certified records, um, in certain places, however, in some places, we were very clear where we said it had to be an affidavit. Um, can you just talk about what a certified record would look like? Is that the landlord saying, "This is true"? Um, how, what is a certified record?
I mean, I, I would think that they would, generally, a certified record is one that is certified to as being a true and accurate copy. Um, that can be done by affidavit, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to mix terms for you, but they, they, they can often be used interchangeably, but an affidavit of certification could, could create a certified record.
Okay. Um, I didn't see any language about zero tolerance for housing discrimination. Will we be including some language around, we are a city that does not discriminate, um, against anyone around housing regardless of race, creed, gender, or economic status or citizenship? So I would like to see some language in there around that. Um, and I think those are the ones, I'm gonna share my time with my fellow colleagues.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I could just respond to one, Council Vice President, questions. As to the gender neutral language, uh, we will, I, I view that as a, although very important, would, does not change the substance of the, uh, of the ordinance itself and therefore we can make that change in advance of the second reading. I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, Council President. So did the adminis-, did the administration research any comparable municipalities before you drafted this ordinance?
We, we certainly did. Um, I can just name a few of the, of the municipalities that we looked at. We looked at, um, Woodbridge, Morristown, Irvington, Newark, Asbury Park. Those are the ones that I can think off the top of my head that we looked at. But I also wanna add, and I wanna thank all of my colleagues who are sitting here, not only was, this was, uh, the work of the business administrator, my office, but then every department head that you see sitting here had the opportunity to review this document and weigh in on it. So this was really a collaborative effort across every department in the city of Plainfield. We're very proud of what we put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, um, in thinking about collaborative, do you see code enforcement and this rent officer working together, this department? Cause I'm, I'm looking, speaking about like our legal dwellings, our rooming homes, how do you see that, those two departments working together?
I, I, I think there will be overlap, um, but it, it's important that the, we want the rent officer to have, have a really, uh, specific charge. Um, and it's really about the enforcement of, uh, of this rent leveling ordinance, this entire regulatory scheme that we're putting together. But I can, I, I absolutely agree, there will be overlap between the two departments. But I think it's necessary to keep it aside, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. In the nineteen, in the 19-page document, cause it was 19 pages, read it three times, um, if you, you've had this effective for August 2025, why not sooner?
Um, we, we thought there'd be, uh, there needs to be a, a period, um, to, uh, educate the public with regard to this, and I think that there will be a, um, a public campaign to make sure not only that residents but that landlords understand the, the regulatory scheme, but I'm sure there's gonna be questions. Um, it also gives, uh, time for the administration to ramp up with all of the administrative pieces and enforcement that's gonna be required to make this work, and we also have to convene the rent leveling board. So I think this gives us ample time, we wanna do it, but wanna do it right. Um, and we think this is the runway that we need to make sure this is, uh, done, um, in a way that ensures, uh, proper enforcement.
Thank you. Um, as it pertains to the rent rules, I see that in that document, it's really not a lot of language, submitting the information to the city clerk. Is, will there be backup documentation required to actually prove that the mortgage was collected?
Absolutely, that, and that will be the role of the rent, of the, of the, uh, rent control officer to ensure that all documentation is, is appropriate.
And I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Other council members? Councilman Wyatt?
Council President?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, thank you for telling that joke and making light of the situation. Uh, this administration has the reputation to sometimes act like they don't see people or hear people. Um, so as you know, that I did roll out a rent control plan, um, I also held a community forum about it. I submitted it to legal counsel for review and didn't receive anything back until it was on the agenda. Um, so just for clarification purposes, and, and first, let me start by saying, I don't really care who gets the credit, as long as our renters can breathe easier, then that's all that really matters when it comes to this here. Um, so for clarity purposes, as a member of the governing body, right, one of our jobs is to write legislation, so I thought I was following the proper protocol, which was, we drafted an ordinance, submitted it to legal counsel for review, asked for it to, uh, be returned by the 10th of January, it was submitted over the holiday break, didn't receive anything back. So what is the process that we, as the governing body, should follow when it comes to submitting legislation? Just so I know going forward.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Um, I just wanna echo that everything you said is 100% correct in that you, you did provide a draft, uh, of an ordinance on rent control. At the same time that you had submitted your draft, uh, the administration was well underway in putting together, um, the, um, the, a full, a full regulatory scheme for the city. Um, your, your draft was considered, um, but, uh, it was my thought as Corporation Counsel that it would be duplicative to have two, uh, competing ordinances, uh, both coming out of the Office of Corporation Counsel, and so I thought to meet the end that you had sought and seeing that, oh, we also have a, a rent control ordinance, we thought that we'd, that the one provided by the administration would suffice.
Mr. President may add something to that as well. Um, there's a person in the audience who submitted an email to the administration dated September the 29th. The administration was way ahead of that email in terms of planning for rent control. The councilman submitted his four-page document on January the 2nd. I spoke in these chambers about rent control on a number of occasions. I spoke about it again at the reorganization meeting in my State of the City address, and so this has been months in the making, and it wasn't a knee-jerk reaction, as I said previously. It required extensive research and we wanted to get it right. So we weren't gonna take a month, two months, we took the period of time that was necessary in order to do the research and to get it right. And that research, everything that we did resulted in a almost 20-page document because the, the research was that extensive, the importance of this to the council and the administration was that significant, as well as to the residents of the city, and so we took our time to do the right thing and to bring forward the ordinance that you have for consideration this evening.
Point of clarity, the question was, as a member of the governing body who, one job is to write legislation, what is the process in submitting, uh, that legislation? Cause I submitted and I asked for a legal review and feedback on it, which I didn't receive, so going forward, so I don't take months as well to work on something and submit it and think I'm gonna get feedback, um, from the legal counsel, what should I do going forward and what should we, as members of the governing body, do going forward when we want to submit legislation?
Well, as far as the Office of Corporation Counsel, I, I mean, absent these extenuating circumstances where we had, you know, the administration and a council member both working on the, you know, towards the exact same end, absent that, I'm always happy to help any council member draft any legislation, um, that you want, uh, you know, for consideration by, by, by the entirety of the governing body. I think this was that rare circumstance where, uh, you, you, Councilman, you, you had asked for something that the, that we were already well on the way, um, and, um, I think I tried, tried to, uh, make that point in, in my second email to you when you, when you followed up with me. Um, but, um, in every other circumstance, Councilman, all council members, my office is available to help draft anything, um, or to do a legal review of any, uh, legislation that you wish to put forward.
Okay, so just a few questions here, if I may, uh, sorry, cause I had to take the time and read the 19 pages and do a compare and contrast to make sure that, uh, it had to meet and it would satisfy the residents here in the city of Plainfield. So just to highlight a few things, just to ask questions about, uh, so in, what is it, chapter 21, it exempts multifamily dwellings with four or fewer units? Uh, the city of Plainfield has multiple, um, rents, uh, multifamilies that meet that criteria, so why are we exempting four or fewer units?
Um, we, we felt, um, this was looking a couple of things, it was looking at other, my, other ordinances, uh, throughout the state, but we also felt that that, our target here wasn't really a, um, a owner of a two or three or four family, um, of home, we were looking at larger landlords. We were looking at larger landlords who, um, could possibly absorb the cost of having a rent-controlled building, and we felt that, that we, we saw that landlord who owns four or less units as somebody who is, you know, maybe struggling as well. So, um, we made that specific policy decision, or, or offering up that specific policy decision for council, that those individuals be exempt, um, because we know how hard it is to be a landlord of a small, uh, of a small four, uh, small, you know, or home or small building. Um, so that was a policy decision.
Okay. Um, and just keeping under that one, so August 2025, you did say that it takes time to, you know, roll it out and educate the community. I just asked that we change the date from August because that, in August of 2023, what we did was condemn a building and put several people on the streets, and now this is like, we created a problem and now we're selling the solution. So we can just look at changing that date, uh, the rent control provisions. The original ordinance, uh, we used the rent increases as the lesser of the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, which has been 4.7% over the last couple of years with a cap of 6%, so whichever was lesser, that's what we would use. So what made you decide to go with 5% of the base rent of flat member?
Once again, uh, looking at other, uh, ordinances throughout the state and making a policy decision. Um, we had to, we, we thought a number, obviously, it's fairly close to the bottom of that CPI, um, and it was, um, we, we thought it was fair for both landlords and, and tenants. Um, so, you know, I'm cer-, we could certainly argue about whether it should be 4.7 or up to 6, um, it was once again a decision that, that was done in the interest of fairness.
Okay, another, uh, item here, the permits on capital improvement surcharges was capped at 10% in the plan I submitted, uh, you went with 15% of the base rent. If we could just have an explanation on that, 15%?
On capital improvements?
Yes.
Um, you know, once again, uh, you know, we, we wanted to, as much as we are, this, this entire regulatory scheme is to ensure an affordability, but we also had to consider the actual costs of being a landlord, um, and we didn't wanna stifle, uh, we didn't wanna stifle a landlord's attempt to make their building better for the, for their residents. So we had to give them opportunities to recoup real costs for their buildings, and so that's why we, uh, established the, a cap of 15% as opposed to any other number. It was only to ensure that landlords are incentivized to keep their buildings, uh, you know, as good, as good as possible based on the financial conditions.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the rent leveling board, uh, so we both had a five-member board, uh, which is okay. So you decided to create a rent control officer and house it in the homeless, uh, the Office of Homelessness Prevention, office that's not created yet, one that I personally think that we do not need, uh, because we do have Plainfield Action Services, and if you look at the website and the duties and the things that they do, uh, it's kinda duplicating services and adding another level of bureaucracy. Uh, the city of Plainfield has a bad reputation of partnering and collabing with nonprofits who are actually doing the work. Uh, so many of times, we just take a step back, invite them in, have the conversation and see how we can collaborate. Um, I can name a few off top, but we had to change the reputation to support the nonprofits who are doing the work in the sector rather than just creating another office and throwing money at a situation where we already also have a bad reputation of enforcement as well. Um, so those two differences, I just didn't understand why, create that position and put it under the, uh, homeless, the Office of Homelessness Prevention. Uh, the tenants protections, uh, so we talked about, let me just see here, let's get that, we'll go to the penalties. So if a tenant wants to appeal, if they go to the rent leveling board and they want to appeal, who do they appeal in your plan? Who do they appeal that to?
They, what, what would the tenant be appealing?
So if, if a, if a tenant, a landlord say, you know, I wanna increase the rent, they go to the rent leveling board, they don't agree with that decision, who do they appeal that decision to?
When, if, if the, um, if the, if, uh, either a grief party wants to appeal the decision of the rent leveling board, they would have to take that to Superior Court.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I put in the plan that they can appeal it to the governing body, the mayor and the city council, so why skip over that level and go right to the Superior Court?
I mean, we, we, I think the, the interest here was to have a dedicated board that was really focused, I think, you know, city council has a lot on its plate, and this is a policy decision, that, that it is important that the, um, the rent leveling board be focused in its mission. Um, I think it has the ability to make sound decisions because that's all it does, is just deals with these issues of landlord-tenant, uh, disputes or concerns. And also, I, I think that, as an attorney, to have every decision of the rent leveling board come to city council could be a potential nightmare. I think you could get clogged up with numerous cases. I think individuals need to know that if they are not happy with the decision of that board, they have to seek it before a, a judge in the, in, at, in a Superior Court. I think that gives more weight, more gravitas, more teeth to the decisions of the rent leveling board and empowers them to, to, uh, make decisions that stick. Um, but that's the attorney in me.
So, as well as I should add, it should not be a political football where someone can come to the seven members of this board, you lobby person A, you lobby person B, to get to the decision that you want to arrive at. It ought to be an objective person, and I'm not saying that you are not objective, but I'm just saying that the process should not invite politics into it, and if you leave it up to the city council, that's what you're doing.
All right, um, no further questions for now.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, any other council members?
Hi, Mr.
Go ahead.
For the rent-
Go ahead.
For the rent leveling board, will there be a bilingual? Because we do have a large Latino community in Plainfield. Will that be part of the qualifications?
No, it is not a qualification. However, I think it's really important that the, to the council vice president's concerns and yours, that we have interpreter services at all the meetings. And also that all the materials be in English and Spanish. And I think on behalf of the administration, we'll commit to that, making that available.
And I should add, you know, appointments coming forward from me as mayor will reflect the demographics that you see in this city.
My last question, how do we avoid, and again, this is maybe an anomaly, a resident that is scared or fearful that their rent has increased and they don't want to speak up? Is there another avenue? Again, I know there's the rent leveling board, but is it the director they appeal to? Like, what is the steps?
If you, I mean, there is specific language in the ordinance that says that if you feel that you've been retaliated against because of a complaint you've made to the rent leveling board, that that is also yet another violation that you can bring to the rent leveling board. So that's in separate and aside. I think the best thing we can do is educate everyone on their rights and let them know that no one should be scared to come forward and that if you are, we will, that the rent leveling board and the rent leveling officer will take swift action to institute fines and penalties against any landlord who would do that.
Thank you, and I hope that we do have some trainings in the city that educate our residents about tenants' rights.
Any other council members? All right, you have more items, don't you?
I'm sorry?
Do you have more items?
Uh, no, actually, I will take the next ordinance. Director Adney asked me to speak on this one specifically. This is an ordinance to establish a four way stop sign, four way stop, I'm sorry, a four way stop intersection at Berkman Street and East Third Street. I spoke with the director and he advised me that that area had become dangerous. There had been several accidents. They instituted a traffic study, which confirmed that a four way stop is necessary at that spot. And he's asking council to move this ordinance forward so that we can establish the four way stop there. Thank you.
Any questions regarding that from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add those items to the voting meeting?
Second.
Are you going through all of them or you just those two?
I'm happy, I think we're just at the consensus phase.
For one and two.
Yeah, for one and two. Oh, yes. I guess, do we have, council president, was there consensus for 2025-01? I'm not sure, I've missed that, no.
Was there consensus?
Oh, that was to both, I'm sorry, my apologies. As to 2025-3, if I could ask Director Fields to jump in for me, that'd be great, thank you.
Sure, this is an ordinance amending the Scatter Site's redevelopment plan. This would add another parking requirement to the redevelopment plan.
Okay, any questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add that to the voting meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that should be added to the voting meeting.
The next ordinance is to amend our land use ordinance. Currently, our ordinance requires that we submit up to 15 copies, uh, paper copies of a submittal to our zoning and our planning boards. This would move to digital copies, reducing the paper copy requirement to two copies and one digital copy, as we would go for digital reviews.
Sounds prudent. Any questions from council members?
Yes, I have a question. So for the digital copies, I guess, how would a zoning board or planning board member, I guess, view plans?
Each member would have a laptop or a tablet.
Oh, cool, okay. So that's going to be new? All right, cool, thanks.
Additional questions? Do we have consensus? All those in, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that shall be added.
Council president asking to remove ordinance 2025-05.
All right, so we'll just leave that off the voting meeting. Any others?
Okay, moving on to 2025-06. This is to amend the land use ordinance. This is related to the amount of structures permitted on single family zone lots. We would also allow the one primary structure plus an accessory dwelling unit to be constructed. The accessory dwelling unit construction would go up to 800 square feet and up to a height of 24 feet.
Okay. Good to see an ADU resolution here. Can be helpful to those in mitigating costs and also generating income for owners. Any questions from council members?
Question, is that limited to one per president? I'm not understanding.
Yes, so you can have one primary structure and then one accessory dwelling units. And this would be permitted in the single family zoning districts, which are R1, R2, and R3.
Can you paint a picture for me? I'm not good with square feet. Is that the size of a garage?
Pretty much. So let's say you have your primary home that has to be occupied by the property owner and then the accessory dwelling unit could be a garage, an apartment over a garage. A two car garage.
And these are areas where the houses currently have driveways? Or are we putting more vehicles on the street?
All of these zones require driveways.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes, Director. So the existing accessory structures that are on single family properties where there's space above a garage and I guess the current zoning does not allow there to be plumbing, does this change that?
Yes, this would allow for plumbing, electrical, and so forth.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, add that to the voting meeting.
The last ordinance is to amend the Scatter Site city owned parking lot. This is to allow for the address 18 through 24 Madison Avenue, which is the parking lot behind McDonald's, for, to build affordable senior housing.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Would you define affordable and what's the income?
Sure. So in this case, what we're looking at, this is 100% senior. So you're looking at 55 and older. Because this is going to be a subsidy, they have to be between 30 and 60, 30 and 80 area meeting income. So what does that mean? That means that it's going to be a combination of studio, one bedroom apartments. In our case, a studio could be as low as 600 a month. Two bedroom at 80 AMI could be as high as 1,800.
Thank you so much.
Is this high rise?
No.
How many levels?
The restriction for the height is six stories.
Other questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that shall be added. All right, anything else? All right, do you have? All right, we're going to motion for a five minute recess.
So moved.
All right.
Aye.
All right.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we will resume our business. We now move on to public comments, limited to resolutions and motions being considered this evening. Total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments, limited to resolutions considered this evening. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Give your name and address for the record. The floor is now open.
Good morning. Name and address and state the resolution you are speaking.
Sure. Quanay Palmer Champliss, 1227 East Front Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. I forgot the paper that has the resolution on it, but I'm going to be referring to the resolution that has to deal with rent control. That was a very interesting and a very needed and a very necessary back and forth on this topic. I'd just like to say for the record that the resident that our mayor was referring to with the email on the 19th was myself. And I did speak on it, and let me just say, the email was not to the mayor. The email was to the Department of Community Service, and he was CC'd on the email. I did not hear from our mayor about my concern. I did get an email from his administrative assistant, I don't know if I'm giving her title right, Ms. Workman, who asked me to send her pictures of the letters that I did receive. I did send the picture of the letters to her. Came to a council meeting, I didn't hear anything about the letters that I sent. I sent another email asking for follow-up to the situation. I still didn't hear from the mayor's office or any council. I did come to the council meeting, I believe it was November's or December's, and I asked about the situation, and I was told that I needed to take that up with DCA because they already had things on file to address that. And my response was, well, what about the city? What are you doing to protect the residents? So there was no answer from the mayor about that, and then again, I'm going to say it publicly again. And then all of a sudden, Mr. Wyatt announced that he was going to tackle the issue of rent control, and now all of a sudden here come the ordinances. Which, like I said before, it's good, right? If you're going to do the battle of the ordinances, only the tenants could benefit from that. But had this young man not made that statement publicly, there would have been no response. And so if the mayor had something in the works to address that, then the two or three times I asked for follow-up, he would have said, we heard you, we understand, we have heard from other residents, we have talked to Ms. Cherry from the United Way, we have talked to other council people, we have talked to Mr. Brown in Health and Human Services, we have talked to Rashara, who's already doing this work, and this is what we have planned. But it was nothing, absolutely nothing. And even when he announced it, I said in this meeting, does that include rent control? Because that was not part of his announcement, and then he said yes. And then he came back in December with another layer. I also agree that there is no need to create two jobs for this, we already have people doing this work. Can somebody make a motion to extend time? Because I wasn't going to talk about this until he made the comment about the email that I sent.
There'll be another opportunity.
But I want to talk about the school stuff in the other opportunity, and I want to be able to finish because he referenced.
The speaker's time has elapsed, and there is no extension.
That's correct.
And, okay, there is no extension. And by the way, I want to know that you were very petty in not mentioning that Mr. Wyatt had a hand. I have a comparison of the two ordinances.
Speaker's time is up.
I have a comparison of the two ordinances, and you use a lot of information in your ordinance. And to reference the councilwoman here for her input and not recognize him for his input makes you petty. And if every council member had a role, you should have mentioned him too. We need to stop the pettiness. You called for civility this year. You called for civility.
And that includes speakers stopping talking when their time's up.
Not to include this gentleman in what he did. So let's be civil. Thank you.
Tell the whole truth. If you want to tell it, tell it all.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Victor Thomas. I represent Evergreen Cemetery in Plainfield, on Plainfield between 4th and 6th.
Which resolution are you speaking regarding?
Resolution, general public comment. I called the city, and I'd actually called and spoke to the city clerk.
The speaker's out of order.
I'm sorry?
You're out of order, so this is just on resolutions or ordinances only. There's a general public comment at the end of the meeting.
General public comment.
We're not at that section yet.
So, okay, so there's another.
Yeah, there'll be another opportunity to speak, sir.
Okay, so I'll come back.
Nancy P. War, 1129 Merle Avenue. I would like to respectfully address ordinance, resolutions R-90-25 and R-91-25, the reexamination of JFK Muhlenberg Hospital redevelopment plan. I appreciate the clarification given tonight about R-90-95 and its relevance to R-91-95. However, Muhlenberg site is a complicated issue, and more complicated than perhaps the Office of Economic Development may be aware. Some of you were not in the office when the initial JFK Muhlenberg redevelopment plan was first prepared in 2017. This plan was prepared before the subsequent merger in January of 2018 between JFK and Hackensack Meridian Health, and before the sale of the Muhlenberg nonprofit land to Muhlenberg Urban Renewal LLC, which was the name that was used at the time of the land transfer in 2018. Mr. Montello was present at the court hearing in Elizabeth for the sale of the Muhlenberg land. There are two legal agreements, documents, that include covenants. The deed includes five restricted covenants, and the final plan of merger may contain two community covenants, which run for a specific length of time. Both agreements contain stipulations that involve property in Plainfield, which may or may not constrain what the Office of Economic Development is proposing. Do these agreements supersede what the city is proposing? Have lawyers thoroughly examined, investigated these two documents and agreements, and all the legalities relative to this reexamination? There are very specific types of law that are involved. Are there any state regulatory authorities that require notification, since the state attorney general was involved in both the deed restrictions and the community covenants? It would be very remiss of me not to pass along this information. It is my civic duty to inform you that these two legal documents exist and may impact what the Office of Economic Development is proposing. Let me make myself very clear. I oppose, I at court opposed the deed restrictions when Muhlenberg was sold. My name is in the deed opposing those deed restrictions. The deed restrictions appear to be in conflict with some of the services that Kane and Capps have conceptualized according to R-90-95. And is Kane and Capps aware that there is going to be Rutgers Detox Center on that property? I just don't want the city to be put in any legal jeopardy by any of this, and I respectfully request that you look at the deed restrictions and that you look at the community covenants. Thank you very much.
Great timing.
I know how to do it.
Name, address, and resolution you're speaking regarding.
Carol Ruiz, Wind of the Spirit, 225 Wauchung Ave., here to speak on Resolution 5325 and rent control ordinance. I'm inspired to hear your discussions about access to education. When I was an undocumented immigrant, I was denied an education because of that status at County College of Morris. Wind of the Spirit Immigrant Resource Center lobbied to change that policy, so today I stand before you as a County College of Morris graduate, a Drew University graduate, and a Seton Hall University School of Law graduate. I ask that each member of this council lobby, your state legislators, legislators, to support the Immigrant Trust Bill, the Resolution 5325, and I look forward to a unanimous vote in favor of this resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. It is clear to me that you don't need me to tell you how important that is, not just for Plainfield but for New Jersey. Should you have any concerns regarding Resolution 5325, please reach out to us, to Wind of the Spirit, to the ACLU, to the League of Women Voters, to the Haiti Solidarity Network, or any of the hundreds of organizations that support this bill. We, Wind of the Spirit, also encourage you to compare the proposed rent control ordinance with the rent leveling ordinance in Newark. That is the best one. We've examined numerous rent control and rent leveling ordinances in partnership with the Fair Share Housing Center, and we have found that Newark's ordinance is the most beneficial to both municipalities and tenants without creating an undue burden on landlords. I encourage you to consider the realities that Plainfield tenants face. Single-family homeowners and multifamily homeowners with less than four units are charging as much as $1,000 for a room, one room, in one house. And then denying the tenant unlawfully the use of the kitchen or the driveway or common spaces. Landlords, not all, but many, are taking advantage of tenants, and the ordinance that I heard described is not going to protect those tenants. Of course, we are still concerned about the displaced families, over 100 families that suffered here in Plainfield as a result of landlord negligence, and I'm wondering how long they will need to continue waiting. That happened in 2023. How much longer will they wait for truly affordable apartments? As Wind of the Spirit also works in Morris County and in Morristown in particular, so please accept and consider my recommendation to you that you ensure your ordinance is not similar to Morristown's ordinance. Despite a rent leveling ordinance, Morristown Black and Latina, Latinx communities have been pushed out because they can't afford the rising rents resulting from redevelopment with pilot agreements. This rent leveling ordinance is crucial for you. Please take it carefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Catherine Hilliard at 1421 Marlborough Avenue here in Plainfield. I just wanted to clarify the MC 2025-06 about the accessory dwelling. It sounds like there's a potential for a primary dwelling and that there could be apartments or something over the accessory dwelling. So that sounds like there's, you know, added people on this lot, not just one structure. So just wanted to clarify if people would be living in the accessory building. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, we have one person on virtually.
Okay. Public hearing in person is closed. Please unmute the speaker.
Caller ending in 600, please unmute yourself.
This is Ashley Davis, 109 East Fourth Street. So I want to speak on Resolution 109/25, my first thanking Councilman Charles McCray in the entire city council on behalf of my grandmother, who is the matriarch of our family, for this ordinance acknowledging the life and legacy of my aunt, who did pass on December 18th. While we know that ordinances are simply pieces of paper, they provide a comfort to families more than, I think, sometimes we know as former members and current members of the governing body. I also want to speak on MC 2025-01, which is the Rent Leveling Board, and I think that this is a great start to rent control in the city. One thing I would suggest and recommend is writing into the ordinance that a member of one current tenant is a member of the Rent Leveling Board, where we see from other boards and commissions across the city, where we have residents who want to do great work, who come in with open hearts to do it, where they don't always live in the areas that are affected by their decisions, or they don't, or they have the privilege to not maybe live in an apartment. They make decisions that really affect tenants in a way that is negative, and that's never their intention. But if you have at least one tenant, one current tenant on the rent leveling board, they can talk to the issues in real time and the things that they're really facing, and really provide a perspective that will make these decisions, I think, more fair and more equitable. I think that the appeal to the Superior Court can sometimes be seen as cost prohibitive to people who are just struggling to pay their rent unless the city will provide residents with resources or access to resources such as legal aid. At the ribbon cutting of the station at Gray Avenue, the mayor talked about a tenant's bill of rights. I think that would be a great addition to this, to this ordinance, so tenants understand what their bill of rights are as renters in this community. My other concern is how the city is not currently clear on how many units will be governed by this ordinance, and the fact that a lot of this information is voluntary from landlords. And then my final concern with this ordinance is the extra fees, like the sewage waste fee, the fuel pass-along charge, the capital improvement fee, the tax surcharge. Is that tax surcharge just from the municipal taxes, or is it for all the taxes that property owners can face? And how is that going to be broken down in leases so renters understand all of the additional things that they are paying for in addition to their base rent? My last concern is MC 2025-07, where the city is giving away more parking to build housing. Is there a plan to replace this parking spaces? And the ordinance says that there's no fiscal impact to the city. However, if these are city-owned lots, how much money was the city making from permitting these spaces either currently or in the past? So that is all of my stuff. I hope I am within my three minutes, but most importantly, to all of this, again, on behalf of my family, a huge thank you for the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public comment is now fully closed. Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please announce the consent agenda?
Council President?
Yes.
Can we, first, Councilor, on the note about the deed restrictions?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I do remember, recall being in court with Ms. Piroir. I'll say this, Ms. Piroir, thank you for bringing to our attention yet again the deed restrictions on Muhlenberg. The court has never, did not in any way hamper our ability to redevelop the property so far, but it's, as part of any redevelopment, we of course will look at any covenants on the property moving forward. But as I sit here this evening, at this stage, we do not see any impediments to anything that has been proposed thus far.
Yeah, just to add that, what's being presented to you tonight is just a letter of intent. It is not a designation of a redeveloper. There has been no agreement reached with the original property owner for a purchase or a lease agreement. As we move forward, those will be presented to the council, should we move forward with your approval.
But we thank Ms. Piroir for bringing, having that historical background on the covenants on the property, and we thank her for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Council President, may I respond to, there was a question about the ordinance 2506. It was in relation to the number of structures that are allowed for the primary structure as well as accessory dwelling units. That would be two. So you can have one primary structure and one accessory dwelling unit allowed on the property. I'm sorry, did I not hear the question clearly?
No, I was just wondering if that meant that you could have two apartment over the accessory building, so that you could have.
No.
Council President, I don't think we can have the back and forth with the ordinance.
No, so just to answer clearly, it's one primary structure, accessory dwelling unit can exist separately, such as a shed building can be turned into a accessory dwelling unit, or if there is a detached garage, you can have a unit on top of it like an apartment. Then there was another question in regard to 2025-07. The city is not giving up any of its parking spaces. This is an ordinance to look at to allow the use. As in many of our city-owned parking lots, we sell the air rights, we maintain all of our parking spaces.
Thank you for the clarification, Director. Anything further? Okay. Clerk, please announce the consent agenda.
The consent agenda items have been identified as Resolutions 5325 through 5725, 05925 through 08925, R09125 through 010925. Voted on separately, removed from the consent agenda are Resolutions R-5825, in which Vice President Sessoms has indicated her intent to abstain, and Resolution 9025, which Councilman Wyatt has indicated his intent to make a motion to table. Also removed from the agenda was ordinance MC 2025-05.
Can we have a roll call?
You need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Sessoms?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Graham?
It's Councilman Graham.
I have this roll call messed up. Let me try again. Council President Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry?
Briggs Jones, not to.
I'm sorry. Pardon me. One more time. Councilmembers Briggs Jones. It's getting late. I apologize. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
I got that right. Consent agenda items have been approved.
Okay. Non-consent agenda, non-consent agenda items.
Yes, we move to Resolution 5825.
5825.
Need a motion and a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Roll call. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes. Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Abstain.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstention, that resolution has been adopted. And Resolution 9025. Need a motion and a second.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Thank you.
Yes, I made a motion to table this until the next meeting, where we can set up a meeting with all of the parties that I listed. Let me listen again for the record.
That's okay. I think we don't, you don't need to recite it. Just a motion to table.
Do we have a second? Okay. Motion dies.
Now we can proceed to vote. We can proceed to vote now.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Abstain.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstention. The resolution has been adopted.
Okay, any others?
Oh, okay.
We go on to ordinances?
Yeah, is there one more? Ordinances on first reading?
MC 2025-01 is an ordinance creating Chapter 21, rent control, to regulate, control, and stabilize rents, and to create a rent leveling board and the duties of rent control officer.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading as amended. So moved. Second. Roll call, please.
Council President, if I may, can I get a, would I, can I recommend a motion? Council President, if I may, can I get a, can I recommend a motion to amend the ordinance to ensure that only one individual of the rent leveling board may be a landlord?
Can we have that motion, please?
Yeah.
I move, I move that we amend the ordinance to reflect that of the five members, one only one member be limited to being an actual landlord, and the remaining members must be tenants.
We have a second?
Second.
The current language says just residents.
Residents.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye in favor.
Aye. Any opposition or abstentions to amended motion, to the motion? Okay, so that has been amended. Can we now have a motion on the amended?
Second.
Okay, and we have a roll call on the amended motion.
Roll call on the amended motion, Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
No.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Motion table has been moved.
Okay.
I need a motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended, please. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Roll call.
Roll call on MC 202501 as amended, Council members Briggs Jones.
Say it again?
It's a motion to adopt MC 202501 as amended.
No.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
No, so proper amendments are made.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed, ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, next.
MC 202502 is an ordinance for a four-way stop intersection at Berkman Street and East Third Street to amend and supplement Chapter 16, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 7, through streets, stop intersections, stop and yield intersections, designating certain four-way stop and three-way stop intersections.
Can I have a motion and a second to adopt it on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading?
Thank you. MC 2025-03, please.
MC 202503 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the 12th Amendment to the 197 Scattered Sites Redevelopment Plan dated December 12, 2024.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 202503, Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading?
Thank you. Next ordinance, please.
MC 202504 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 17, Land Use, 17:8-2.A and 17:8-7.B.6 in the City of Plainfield for the additional requirement of submitting digital copies to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 202504, Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading?
Okay. 2025-06, please.
MC 202506 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union, amending Chapter 17, the Land Use Ordinance, Article 9, Section 17:9-23, Buildings or Structures per Lot, Primary and Accessory Dwelling Units.
Can I have a motion and a second, please, to adopt this on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call on MC 202506, Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
No.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is six in favor, one opposed, MC 202506 has been adopted on first reading.
All right. 07, please.
MC 202507 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the Second Amendment to the Scattered City-Owned Parking Lots and Adjacent Lots Redevelopment Plan dated December 12, 2024.
Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call on MC 202507, Council members Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That's unanimous?
Okay, thank you. I think that concludes business. We now move to general comments. Total of 30 minutes has been allocated for all public comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to discuss any topic at all. Name and address for the record. The floor is now open. Good evening.
Council President, Mayor Matt, Council members, Bradford Artis, retired firefighter, Plainfield Fire Department. I have some paperwork for you, if you don't mind.
Yes, please, hand it to the clerk.
All the council members and one for the mayor. Back in 1992, myself and 11 other African-American firefighters in this room were sworn in, the first all-African-American class in the Plainfield Fire Department. We took that moment to vow to protect this city with whatever we had, and we did that for 25 years. At retirement, we were expected to get a benefit of our health benefits. If you look in this, we had, we ended up going to court, and the city appealed it three times, lost three times on appeal, and are currently refusing to pay seven of us our health benefits, two whom are deceased, so their families should get those benefits, three currently live within the city limits. And those members are paying taxes, and their taxes are going, are being used against them to not allow them to retrieve their money and be awarded this benefit. If you look on that last page, it says, "Any member on that department that started before 2010 and had 20 years of service or more are entitled to this benefit." Remember, in the beginning of this, I said 1992, and we still have not received our benefit yet. And no one can give me an answer why. And I just implore you and ask if you could check into it and find out why seven members of your department are being refused and a benefit that they're entitled to. Thank you.
Charles Holmes, 660 Sheridan Avenue, Plainfield, resident for 35 years, retired firefighter for seven, 25 years on the Plainfield Fire Department. Just like Mr. Brad stated, I'll pick up from where he left off. We took the city to court three times, three separate judges approved, ruled it our favor, and said, "Pay these guys." Three separate judges. The city appealed three times. Mr. Mayor, why?
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What is going on here? Mr. Mayor, why are you fighting us? We're like retired, we're like Army vets, you know, that have been fighting the war for 32 years, 25 plus seven. You know, I loved being a fireman. We gave our 150%. We gave our all to everybody here, you know. And some of the guys that Mr. Artis was talking about is paying like $500 to $800 a month, coming out of our pension checks. The pension checks stay right here. So anybody thinking about retiring, think twice, because your pension stays right here when you got inflation and everything else, city taxes, medical, eggs and milk, all that comes out, but the pension stays right here. You know, we're struggling. I'm all beat up, I'm banged up, I need my medical, you know. 25 years from 92, when the late Mayor Mitchell sworn us in in this room, you know, he was a good man. I just found out, the reason why I'm all, because I just found out one of our lieutenants passed away today on the Plainfield Fire Department. You might know him. I don't think you know him. His name is Jerry Thompson. He was back in 92. He basically taught me how to stay alive, because firefighting is a very dangerous job, you know. And there's only one man in this room, in this council, that's really trying to help us. And I'm introducing him to everybody. I'd like for everybody to give him a round of applause, because he's the only one that has heard our cries and hear our prayers. And I like to give praise, what praise does it do, to this one man up here. And he's the only one who's trying to help us. And when I introduce him, I'd like for everybody just give him a round of applause, because he's the only one trying to help us, you know. And his name is Mr. Councilman Richard White.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victor Thomas, 1017 Madison Avenue. I represent the Evergreen Cemetery on Plainfield Avenue between 4th and 6th, AKA First Park Baptist Church. First Park Baptist Church owns this cemetery since the 17th century. Everyone, I guess some of the familiar streets, you know, Stell, Randolph, and all that, in the City of Plainfield have the people buried there. We out, we've actually been there longer than the city, than this building and every other building. We've been there Revolutionary War, 1700s. So I say that for one purpose. We can no longer afford to maintain this cemetery. This cemetery will go within, let's say, if we give up this year and don't actually pay the landscaper, it'll just be weeds and everything else, with dumping and everything. Unfortunately, with our congregation of 216 years, we can no longer, our congregation got older and smaller. Right here on 7th Street, right there, 315 West 7th Street, First Park Baptist Church, we've been there 216 years, we've maintained the cemetery all of that time. It's Evergreen Cemetery, as all of you know. Let's see, I mean, so many of the mayors, the governor was buried there, the mayors, well, so many of these mayors were buried there. Mr. Randolph, Randolph Road was buried there, the Muhlenberg that you referred to. The history is deep, and our archives date back all over there. If we surrender the cemetery, we would like to, this is the first step. We haven't actually applied. There was considered a motion of release, I'm not sure the exact term, but according to state law and cemetery law, according to cemetery statute, we can release this due to lack of taxes, but we don't pay taxes. There's only one sewer line that runs through it. At one time, the city tried to get us to pay that tax. But because we don't pay taxes, we would, our first step in surrendering this to the city is to come to the city council. We want to be step by step with you. We're not trying to do this in any sort of arbitrary way. We're actually, we want to make the transition smooth. We hope that you don't do anything along the lines of developing it, because as I mentioned, all of those different people throughout the city history are there. I guess the council might concur. Up to 50 years, if there's no correspondence in a cemetery, it becomes dormant land. That's our concern. Our concern, if we turn it over to the city, or if we turn it over to a private developer, anyone could develop it. You don't have to. Once a grave is 50 years, no correspondence, you can do what you want. That's five acres of property in Plainfield. We're hoping by giving it to the city, you'll, of course, say, "We're not going to do anything to this property. We're going to maintain it. We'll have the Department of Works go over there and take care of it." We used to have a pretty good relationship with them, but that changed. You no longer assist us. So at $16,000 a year, we're a congregation of 75 people. We cannot afford it anymore. We were, we had a youth program, a grant for a little while, a SLAP program used to come and help us years ago. I started. But to make a long story short, this is the first step to proceeding along those lines. We wanted to come to the city and say, "That city, that property, with all of our fall bearers of Plainfield, which we all love, will go in disrepair." So if we contact the city, and our next step, two, three, and fours, I noticed all the resolutions and different things like that, we'd like to comply. We'd also like your support, the council's support. That's why we're here. Clergy, we're together. I've been on the clergy, so we will be in touch. And if there's any comments or any concern, please feel free to notify me. Thank you.
I'm too little for this. Earl Ruiz, Wind of the Spirit, 225 Wachang Ave. We encourage you to explore the rent leveling boards in other municipalities, as these boards can at times create bureaucratic barriers instead of fulfilling their mandate. Representation matters. I see, I don't need to tell this council that. The rent leveling board then must include Plainfield tenants, not just Plainfield residents. So please consider that amendment before your second reading. It might be substantive, and then you'll need to do it again. But do it again, and do it right, because representation matters. If you've never lived in a basement, like I have, if you've never lived with roaches, like I have, if you've never lived in an unsafe attic, like I have, if you've never felt homelessness, or abuse, or neglect, or violence, then how are you going to represent those of us who have? And this council, unfortunately, right, you've been in the news. I know it's awful to be in the news about something that wasn't your fault and wasn't under your control necessarily, but Plainfield has suffered abusive landlords that have been splashed across national news. And now you have the opportunity to lead the nation, or certainly our state, in protecting tenants and ensuring that representation. You took a great step in putting it on your agenda. It sounds like both the mayor and residents and council members have explored this for some time, right? So continue doing it and getting it done right. If you, if you are concerned, and I appreciate that some of you, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Councilmember Dr. Sesame? Sessoms, thank you. Dr. Sessoms. If you were concerned about tenants knowing their rights, great, thank you. Legal Services of New Jersey and Wind of the Spirit regularly provide Know Your Rights workshops and Know Your Responsibilities, because yes, we're responsible tenants, right? This is not about just bashing landlords. We are responsible tenants too, just like landlords need to be responsible. Those workshops are available. We can work together. We've done, I personally have done those workshops in Moorestown, in Dover, in the Oranges. We can do them here. So it's an opportunity for us to work together and help Plainfield move forward, and truly be a community that moves forward and has progress, and continues to provide safe and affordable housing for all your residents.
Hi, Kwanay Chamblis, 1227 East Front Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. So first of all, I just want to say that one of the things that I like about living here, right, is that when I look on this panel, I see people who look like me, I see people who look like my sons, I see people who look like my daughter-in-law, and I see people who look like my older uncles. With that, representation matters. Dr. Sessoms, I agree with you that being African-American, sometimes in our public school experience, we are not always encouraged like other students. In fact, we're discouraged, right? And all of us know the story of Malcolm X, when he said he wanted to be a lawyer, and the teacher told him what he should. But I want us to carry this as well. When we have young people who have desires to want to do something great, we need to encourage them. And I was told that we cannot control or And I was told that we cannot control or police what others say, but as African-American people, and for those of us who have African-American sons, we cannot allow people in the room to discount or disrespect them. And if the lawyer was gracious enough to call on you, Dr. Sessoms, by your name, by your name, and talk about what you contributed to this document, he should have also talked about Councilman Wyatt, and mayor should have called him by his name instead of the counselor. If we're going to show respect for you, Dr. Sessoms, Black women, we must make sure that everyone sitting on this deus, whether we agree with their politics or not, is shown the same respect. And we definitely don't allow people who don't reflect our community to disrespect those of us who do. So let me just say that. Also, let me say that as a member of the NAACP, we do have a stance on charter schools, we do not agree with charter schools, because charter schools take money away from the public schools, where the majority of Black and Brown children have to get their education. I don't think it's anything wrong with having a discussion with the Board of Education and other stakeholders before we move on this, because we have to ask ourselves the question, why is it that charter schools want to come to Plainfield? What is it about Plainfield that charter schools find a home? These are for-profit schools, a lot of times their staff is not unionized, and the studies show that they do not do any better than our public schools. In fact, our Queen City Charter School is the lowest-paid teachers on the list of paid teachers in Union County. So I do think that we should go back and have the question and have the discussion before we rush on everything. Five charter schools we already have, why Plainfield?
Good evening, I'm Stuart Seidenstrucker, 225 Watchang Avenue is where our center is, I'm here to thank you for supporting the resolution of Immigrant Trust Act. At the first meeting of four towns, right after the election, the dreadful election, we came to your town as we came to other ones, and you're number two to approve it. Madison was the first one, you're number two, and Morristown is coming in just next week. So I congratulate you on that, we did not see everything eye to eye, but on this one we do, and you have a specifically very important situation, because Skutari, which is the senator representing your town, has also a very important position in the Senate. So I urge you to talk to Carter, Kennedy and Skutari to make sure this keeps going where it has to go, as you've seen, as we all seen from what happened. On day one of this dreadful administration, things are not going to get that much better, so it's time for us to get our act together and pull on this immigration specifically, and appreciate your work on this. Thank you.
Good evening. Name and address?
Good evening, council members. My name is Lynda Lashley, I live at 27 Netherwood Avenue in Plainfield. What brought me to this meeting tonight was that I read and tap into Plainfield that Councilman Wyatt had introduced legislation for rent control. That's what got me here tonight, because Plainfield has a serious problem with high rents. I have seen a dramatic increase in homelessness since you have allowed these very so-called luxury apartment owners to build these apartments and charge $3,000 for one bedroom, nobody can afford that. Why are you allowing these people to come into our town, charge all this money people cannot afford? Go to Wawa, you see people sleeping in their cars. By allowing these developers to come in here and charge all this rent has incentivized the existing landlords to double, triple and quadruple their rents every year. Right there on Front Street, what is it, Netherwood, right next to Netherwood, they used to pay 1,500, this guy is going up 200, 300, $400 in a year. He's driving everybody out. Where are these people supposed to go? What are we going to do about this? You are giving tax incentives for these people to come and displace our people, why can't you negotiate a better deal where more low-income people can get into some of these so-called luxury houses that are like shoeboxes, they're not even big enough to be officially two-bedroom places? So, you know, I've been here since 1967, we moved here right after the riots, I grew up in Greenbrook Village, I went to Barlow School, first grade, our rent was $225 a month for a two-bedroom apartment with a dining room. Now I have a house, I have no dining room. My point is that I really would like for you all to be a lot more considerate, when you're allowing these developers to come in here, charge these high rents, incentivizing the existing landlords to double and triple their rents and create a catastrophic situation in our city. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Anyone online? Is anyone online?
No, there's no one online.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there any, any follow-up with the administration?
Sure. Council President, I just want to respond, I understand that all members of the governing body received a packet, and I just want to state that, first, I want to thank the firefighters for their service to the community, it is greatly appreciated, but we have to be governed by the law, and what was put in front of you was made to, you were made to believe that this was somehow a decision, an order of a court, that stated that these gentlemen were entitled, these firefighters were entitled to certain benefits, that's not what you got. What you have in front of you is a brief that was written by their attorney in the appellate division with regard to an arbitration decision. And if you look at that arbitration decision, it doesn't specify that any of the individuals who got up are entitled to any benefits whatsoever, but specifically, the decision deals with benefits post-2018 retirements. These individuals do not meet that criteria, but what I would recommend to them is that they had counsel, they had an attorney when they filed this, that I would welcome them as corporation counsel, I have not heard from anyone, any of these individuals who got up until this evening. What I recommend is that they, either they or their attorney who represented them ably in this case, reach out to me, if they feel that they've been aggrieved in any way, I don't believe they have, but if they've been aggrieved in any way, I'm happy to sit with the business administrator and rectify the situation. But what isn't helpful is coming to a council meeting without ever making any attempt whatsoever to reach out to my office or to the business administrator who I've been in contact with about this matter previously. So I think there is a way forward, I recommend that they reach out to me and communicate with my office directly, and I'm even happy to stay after the meeting if they want to have a conversation. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. All right. In attendance, yes, Mayor. Go right ahead, Mayor.
Yes. One, I would like to invite Wind of the Spirit to leave your information with the clerk, and we would be more than happy to have a conversation with you regarding the concerns that you raise. Number two, and forgive me for not remembering your name, but concern in the cemetery. Victor, if you can contact my office, we can sit down and have a conversation. And regarding rent control, we have responded to the concerns expressed by so many of you, and that is the reason why the ordinance was placed on the agenda, the reason why it was adopted on first reading, because we have heard you, and this ordinance is our response. And the final thing I want to call attention to is that there will be a town hall at the Washington Community School tomorrow at 6:30. This will be the third town hall that my administration will be hosted in the last three months, and there are other town halls on the calendar. This will be in collaboration with counselor from the 1st and 4th Ward, Julianne Cherry. This is tomorrow at Washington Community School at 6:30, and it is the third town hall in as many months. The first one was in the cafeteria at the Plainfield High School, the second one was at the Booker School, now the third one is being held at the Washington Community School, and more will be coming in each and every ward of our city. We invite you to attend, I'll see you at 6:30 tomorrow at the Washington Community School. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Sure. So, second?
All in favor, say aye. All right, meeting adjourned.